I will call the meeting of BUHS number six to order at seven o'clock for Monday, September 19th. And we'll start with as we do with clerk's report. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 22nd?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sean? Okay. Sean? Yes. Seconded, okay. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections, suggestions? Yeah, Sean?
I read over the minutes and I, there was a sentence, it was under Act 46, and said, "Townwide vote will be November 8th." And I was kind of wondering about that. It's, I think it should be Putney, Dumerson, Guilford, and Brattleboro will vote on November 8th, or maybe you could say the district, even though that's not going to happen.
Of course, they've changed that.
No, I know, but it had the, you know, it's recorded accurately about who is going to vote. And if I say the town, that doesn't represent who's going to vote.
Yeah, it would be the merger, it would be the district towns. Each individual school.
So if we just change the district towns, would that work?
You say add the towns.
Well, yeah, I mean, it should be everybody but Burn.
Right.
Yeah. Even though it's not going to happen, it still should be reported as to who it would be.
Just say the towns of Brattleboro, Dumerson, Putney, and Guilford will vote.
Well, that's what I had.
So, we'll make that change?
Putney, Brattleboro, Dumerson, Guilford.
Yep, we'll make that change, okay. Anything else related?
Putney, Dumerson, yeah, Guilford, Brattleboro. And then, there was one other thing that Mr. Davis said, the petition discussion will be September 19th, which is tonight, but I think that you meant the Act 46 study committee meeting on September 9th?
That's, I think, was what I meant, yes, that was the plan at the time, yeah.
Oh, oh.
The 19th should have been the 9th.
So just instead of the 19th, it should have been the 9th.
Should have been 9th, yeah, yes. It was September 8th. It should have been September 8th, not September 19th.
Oh.
So the 8th.
Was it the 8th?
Yeah, it was the 8th.
Oh, that's right, it was Thursday, the 8th.
Thursday, the 8th, I just confirmed the schedule, yeah. All right. Anything else for corrections to the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or extensions?
Abstaining.
Mike and Lori are abstaining. Okay. And so minutes are passed, all right. Are there any other communications that board members have gotten that they will need to share during this time? No? Okay. So, and there's no groups or individual visitors for us tonight, so I'll accept a motion to move into consent agenda.
So move.
Seconded. Moved by Ruth, seconded by Bob? All right, so first is finance, building, and transportation.
Finance, building, and transportation met on August 29th. I was going to guess the 28th. And we approved warrant numbers 1,005, 1,006, 1,009, 1,010, 1,011, 1,012, 1,013, 1,014, from July 25th. From August 8th, we approved 1,016, 1,017, 1,018, 1,019, 1,020, 1,021, 1,022, 1,023, in the amount of $496,296,85. And from August 22nd, 10/24, 10/26, 10/27, 10/28, 10/29, 10/30, 10/31, and 10/32, in the amount of $404,485.66. We also approved payrolls of August 5th in the amount of $430,116.40. And August 19th, in the amount of $414,567.92. We also toured the building, which looked absolutely lovely.
Which building?
The whole complex.
BUHS, WRCC, BAMS?
The whole complex.
This is something we've done generally just before school starts. It's a great opportunity to see the summer work that's done when we do our budgeting. We also update our capital plan, and it's nice to revisit that while we're actually in the building. And we get an indication from staff that there's some things that are going to change. And we see the results of the summer work, flooring, roofwork, and all that, so, and the place just looks great.
Good. Good to hear.
We also had a visit from the Whitestone Village Association. Jerry and Kathy Carbone came. This is regarding the three pieces of property that we own up there. And they came to review their situation, and they're supposed to be having a meeting, and well, well, actually, they did now. They had one, or they had a second one?
No, well, they had the initial meeting, and I attended. But I got an email, I think I sort of mentioned this under communications, and they're going to have another meeting this Friday, which I believe is the 25th, at 6:30. And I will try to attend that. And it's specifically just to look at the annual fees that they want to do, so I'll try to go to that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sean, for doing that.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I don't know what to call it, but whatever.
Is that it for finance and?
I believe so.
Yeah? Okay.
Next meeting?
Next meeting is September 22nd, which will be this Thursday at 8 o'clock.
Thank you.
At Central Office. In James Kane Conference Room, yes.
Okay. WSCSU Finance Committee.
We've had two meetings since our last meeting. The August 25th meeting, we went over warrants and wire transfers and some American Express, and then had a superintendent search update. And then we met on the 14th to really start the superintendent search. So is this a good time to?
I think it's over now.
So we, that is progressive. We're in the procedure. Ron's going to pass out a memo outlining what we've done. There was a, you know, besides Ron talking to us and all the boards in executive session about the process, a notice of the opening was distributed internally to teachers associations and staff administrators, seeing if there were any internal candidates to start with. And we are currently in the process of reviewing the internal candidates. We met on the 14th to do that. We met, as you'll see here, on the 16th, three days ago, with the leadership team, which is basically all the principals, and headed EES, and Paul Smith, I guess that was, I think that, I mean, the principals from all the towns and all the schools. I think one principal was missing. And then coming up, and at these other meetings, the first meeting was, you know, a discussion with any of the internal candidates with the finance committee. These other meetings are, you know, the last meeting, I said here there would be open process, but it's confidential. I mean, it's, as we do with anything, with, you know, all the principal searches, there are meetings, and then there are, as it goes on, community meetings, and we don't advertise who's being looked at. But they're open in terms of bringing in different constituencies. So besides the leadership team, on the 29th, there'll be a meeting with teachers and staff. And again, there'll be two members of the finance committee at each of these, basically observing. So teachers and staff will get a chance to meet. And then on the October 6th, community service partners and parents will get a chance to meet. And then on the 30th, on September 30th. Before that, we'll be meeting at Central Office with the staff there. And then it will come back to the finance committee for our recommendation in terms of where we go. And I know I, you know, people have asked all sorts of questions about how it's going, I mean, not just from here, but, and it's always a tough one of trying to figure out if we do, you know, internal or we go abroad search. So I think it's been really clear to, including to any candidates, there were internal candidates that we're looking at. That we're looking at. There are certain benefits of familiarity and transition for internal candidates, but that's not a lock at all. And so what we're looking at is whether, is going through this. And each of these groups, you know, will give us feedback of whether I think that who we're looking at can fill the slot, or whether we should go external or not, and do a broader base search. So that's still an open question. And we'll be looking at, you know, at the meeting on the 16th, I mean, how many are there? Like, at least this many sitting around the table?
There were 12, 13.
13. And I imagine, you know, the other groups will be comparable or bigger, so we'll get.
I need you to give me a little background, like teacher-staff.
But we'll get a lot of feedback on it, so it's, so we will see where it goes. But so far, I'm pleased with the process.
Yeah, for the teacher-staff group, there'll probably be about 25 teachers, staff members. Try to get a good representation from each school. Community service partners, representatives from DCF, Department of Children and Families, Wyndham Childcare, Building Bright Futures, Food Connects, Brattleboro Police Department, a number of parents, HCRS. So that'll be a smaller group, but it'll probably be 12, 12 to 15 people.
So that's, I mean, but, you know, at one of our meetings, we talked about the difference between a secret process as opposed to confidential. And it's not really a secret. I mean, confidential, I mean, you know, we're going to be talking to 50, 60 people. So it's confidential, but it's open. And we're trying to be as widespread as we can in terms of getting relevant feedback, so.
Two questions. Who actually makes the final decision? Would that be the SU board?
Yeah.
Okay. And how many candidates do we have?
Well, that's really not public information.
It was circulated, yes, I'd say, internally to teachers and administrators.
It's basically, it's not open, it's confidential. I mean, I can't go to one of those meetings, can I?
I don't think so.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify what you meant by that, that it's open, but open to members of these.
So it's, no, I mean, it's broad, it's wide-reaching. Open is not the best word. Wide-reaching, trying to get all the constituencies. You know, and the finance committee itself are representatives from each of the boards. So I'm your representative there, and then each of the five town boards are represented there.
But there is an old process for a board-finance-committee member discussion about it. It's sort of like an executive session?
Well, I mean, we can go into executive session.
Yeah, no, it is. It's an executive session for personnel.
Yeah.
But the finance committee is essentially the screening committee.
But there's not communication between the finance committee and the SU and the individual boards directly?
Not directly about the candidates. Each board understood the process, and now that we have the dates, I'm going to be working with each finance committee rep, board rep, to make sure every board goes over this document, so they see the process.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this document, and I think it's probably my ignorance, but I'm the, just with the first name, I wasn't actually aware of all who the, I mean, Amy, is that Amy Wall?
Amy Wall, yep.
Yeah. I don't, Richard, is Richard?
Blazer.
Richard Blazer.
Mark Truhan, Eric Fennell from Guilford.
It might be helpful to, you know, have the last name and put it down on their phone, so that when I get a sheet. Otherwise, I'm sort of guessing on who the people are.
Yep.
So essentially, the SU finance committee is involved in the entire process, and they would make a recommendation to the SU board, because the board itself doesn't have, isn't privy to anything other than what's reported to them. Once the process is closed, and then the committee goes to them with a recommendation? And then anyone from the boards would be able to go to that SU board meeting and hear about it there? And that would also be an open meeting if anybody else, not just a board member wanted to attend, just like other SU?
Well, again, I think it was going to executive session for personnel.
But board members would be allowed to go to the executive session.
What is the date of that actual meeting?
We have a tentative date, October 20th, but I'm not sure if we're going to need to change that based on a whole number of issues. That's the one that I have in my schedule.
Will that be for the SU as well, or is it the finance?
Well, that's the SU.
The SU, okay.
And that would be here?
Actually, on a Thursday, it might be in Putney.
Will that be opposed to making that a warrant meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because if you bring the SU meeting?
Anybody that is a board member could, or anybody could come. But if you go into executive session, the board members could be part of that.
Right.
You said October 20th?
Yep.
Ooh. I'm giving an exam.
There's a number of things that I think we have to change this date.
Right, yeah, October 20th, I'm not sure that, in a Marquess Sin, who's going to be speaking at UMass, I turn, Marquess Sin.
There wouldn't be any sooner, right, Ron?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So is that it for WSU finance?
I have one more question. You have like four focus groups. Do one, does one focus group hold sway over other three? If one of the focus groups, for instance, the community service partners or parents disagreed with the process of going for an internal kind of candidate and not opening up to a broader search, how would you deal with that?
My feeling, and I've said this to the SU finance committee, is I think you've got to get consensus from each group. If there's a group that has reservations about an internal candidate, then I'd say, you know, we'd have to do external search.
Do you think that at that point, that the group would have an issue with process? Or it would really just be about the candidate, and then that would mean that the process would have to be opened up anyway?
I'm not sure of your question.
So would a focus group have an opportunity to have an issue with the process of only starting?
I couldn't determine that at this point. That's a hypothetical, but I couldn't answer.
Yeah, I mean, one concern that I've had all the way through, and has been discussed at both of these meetings where candidates were there, is if there's hesitation, you know, significant hesitation about the process, I would not want to, you know, burden an internal candidate, you know, coming under some sort of cloud of, boy, how did that happen? And so, so there's a bar that we'd have to pass, I think, in order to forego it. There are, you know, reasons of continuity and team building and other sorts of things that prompted us to take the initial look internally, as we've discussed here before. But, you know, I don't think, you know, the intention is not to, not just, you know, it would be unfair to any candidate to have a cloud. It's going to be hard enough following that guy over there to have other, yeah, I'm talking about Mike. No, yeah, no, it'd be hard enough to follow Ron as it is, that we want to make sure that the process is good. And if some of these groups are raising, you know, problems, you know, we're not going to, I don't think we want to throw out anything.
I think that's why it's important that screening committee or SU finance committee reps are at each meeting. They'll have firsthand knowledge of how those discussions went.
Which is sometimes is even more than when, in the typical sort of principal review, you have two, three finalists, sometimes just one. But there are the, and usually it happens all in one day in various rooms. And the discussions go on, and then reps from the different groups, very similar to these sorts of groups, come in and report. And, but this way, and because I, as I mentioned, I was at the leadership group, and just hearing the depth and the seriousness of the questions and the discussion afterwards, you get much more of a feel of what's going on. And I know the focus group, you know, appreciated our being there as well, and said so. At least it said so, maybe it didn't mean it, but it, so I think we'll have a really good sense. And if, you know, again, as Ron was saying, it's hard to deal with hypotheticals. You know, say, well, if this happens, if that happens, I mean, it's a bit of a judgment call, but it's, you know, and we'll have to present, we'll have to feel comfortable making a recommendation to the SU board, and then we can deal with it at that point.
Thank you.
I would have to say, if I could say one more thing. It's a little odd, since we have had executive information, executive session information about some of the process. And obviously, that can't be ever spoken about. But I think you just referred to some of that executive session material in a, not in a direct way. So I just think it's a time to be really careful about transferring executive session information to a public setting.
Yeah, I mean, I think our hope today was to talk about process.
Yeah. I hope I didn't say anything in terms of substance.
No, you did. You did, you did refer to, I can't remember the exact words, but, yeah.
Well, I think that regarding that point, Sean, at the time it was given to us, it was executive session information, which since then has emerged in a public fashion.
No?
And now it's open to.
The processes.
It's open for discussion in a non-executive way.
That's a good point.
So it's just that at that time, it was executive session.
Yes. Well, that's a good point, because one of, I'm always cautious about, you know, talking in a public, it doesn't matter where you are, with information that comes from an executive session, and when you then can say, okay, this is what.
I think a big difference, and I appreciate what Ron just said, a month ago when we talked about this, I needed to get a confirmation from the board whether we would start this process. And I think there were executive session, I know there was executive session material that I needed to share with you.
Right.
So we're beyond that when we talk about this as the process.
Yes. Yeah. I guess.
And I did that with each board.
Yeah. If I had the exact parameters, what, you know, what is still executive session material? What is not?
You know, specific feedback, the question about the number of candidates at this point, the response that, let's say, the leadership group or the teachers are giving at this point would be executive session. It would be confidential.
Because that's personnel.
Yep.
One thing about executive session like that, I would like to, in the future, do the executive session, but not make a decision until like a following week or two, because things that happen in executive sessions, sometimes they happen so fast, I don't have a chance to give a, you know, a great deal of thought. We're kind of urged or we're kind of required to make a decision in a short period of time. I don't know how, if that could be worked into an executive session. Or you could come up with some kind of a personnel proposal and then deal with it a month or two later, or the next meeting.
I think, I mean, historically, when things have become to us for executive session, it's come to us in the most timely way it possibly can. And sometimes it just, it can't wait till the next meeting, you know, it has, the decisions have to be made. But I think about, like, with this situation, when we had that executive session and we talked about some of the stuff that's now public, it was done to give us that, you know, this is where we're heading with things, you know? But I think that, I mean, my experience has been that the administration has always given us as much leeway or heads up on some things as they possibly can, but some things are just too time-sensitive to do that.
Some things, I need a little more time.
Yeah.
I agree with Mike, because I think, you know, when you're presented something, you have to make a decision right there. We don't have time to process. It's, I think it'd be good to have more time to process.
Depending on the issue, of course. Some meetings immediate response, but some don't.
Totally.
All right. Anything else on this in WSCSU Finance Committee? All right. So moving back to consent agenda, planning and policy. Planning and policy met this evening. We have a new member and a member of planning and policy. So most of this meeting was taken up in just a general discussion of our process in planning and policy, and how we look at policies and general philosophy. We did not have a lot of time to get into the meat of the policies before us, and there's a lot that we need to go over on them. So we'll be scheduling a full hour-long planning and policy session before the next meeting to dig into those in greater detail. Thank you. Teacher curriculum committee.
Met this evening to approve a 1% and discuss what 1% we would like to review and see presentations of.
Excellent, thank you. BAMS committee.
BAMS committee has not met. Can I have some communication, and it seems like we can do it tonight with Keith's presentation.
Okay.
WRCC has not met.
WSCSU Act 46 Study Committee. We met on September 8th was the last time that we met. And as a study committee, we talked about some changes that needed to happen and did happen in relation to the proposal, the articles of agreement, and some date issues. And Ron's going to go over some of those changes from the last time. You all have seen that, also update us on some of the date stuff.
I think Frank sent an email out to the UHS Finance Committee that Thursday morning he's going to go over the first draft, or the draft of the withdrawal agreement between Vernon School District and UHS number six. So you'll have that. I'm going to need to kill on that tonight. Well, I think the biggest thing is after hearing from the town clerks, we met with each of the town clerks, they were concerned about the national election, the federal election, and trying to consolidate, actually, three votes. The Vernon withdrawal, the merger, and the directors' petitions. On top of a very busy election process. So we had a really good meeting with them. They actually came to our next study committee meeting that next night. They didn't have to really say too much, because I think the people from the study committee that listened to them really got the point that it would be too much to put on them. So, in fact, we didn't know this, but we missed some of the federal deadlines for warnings. And so it would have to create a whole separate system if we did that. It's too much of a burden. So after a lot of.
And if I can just jump into, one of the things, I had a conversation with the Brattleboro town clerk that, earlier that day of September 8th, just about her thoughts on that. And she, one of the things that I found interesting is she said that, I thought, having more people turning out for election, which happens during a presidential election, would be better for us. But she said that historically what happens is, yes, more people come to vote for the presidential elections, they come in, they vote for president, and then they leave, and they don't mark anything else on their ballot. And I found that interesting. I just, not having done that process before, I didn't know that. And myself personally, I was always taught never leave a blank. You fill in all the spaces, you know? So I couldn't imagine doing that myself, but I found that interesting. But I found that interesting. So even though turnout would be higher if we could meet it, it would not necessarily mean we'd have a higher vote turnout for the questions that we're interested in relation to Act 46.
Yeah, in addition to that, if I could add something. Ellie Greenblock also had an article, a letter to the editor in the paper. And he was saying that people could bring up, pick up their absentee ballots on September 26th. So obviously, that wouldn't, that would preclude having the ballot about the school issue, because it hasn't been developed yet.
Right.
I assume that that would actually be a totally separate ballot. And it wouldn't be anything that you do in, you know, voting booth per se would be a ballot itself. You put in locks probably.
Yeah, and so you'll see, the Finance Committee will see it first, and then you'll see it after that. A ballot, a sample ballot for the Vernon withdrawal vote that every district would, would have to take on the same day. We're looking at probably December or January for that vote. And that's dictated really by, their vote was certified by the Vernon Town Clerk of the school district. But it's, it's when we get notice from the Secretary of State's office, and we haven't received that notice. So it has, that vote has to be within 90 days of that notice. So at this point, without getting the official notice, we're looking at, and it's good that it's probably either the first or second week in December. The Agency of Education is aware that we haven't gotten the certification of the notice, so they're working with the Secretary of State on that. But, so there'll be one vote probably around December for the withdrawal of Vernon for the BUHS district that each of the member districts needs to vote on. And then the committee decided that the merger vote would happen on town meeting, March 7th, 2017. And that made sense in terms of, you know, if, if we were thinking about a big turnout for the November 8th federal election, the next biggest turnout is going to be town meeting day, March 7th. So that, that's the tentative date for that, that the board approved or the study committee approved. So I think that, those are the biggest changes from the meeting of the September 8th. There's a couple of other questions that came up about co-mingling votes. And we're still getting confirmation about that. Those are the only other things.
What do you mean by co-mingling?
When, when the, when the directors are voted on, other than the first time, those votes will be co-mingled as a unified school district. The first time, they have to be separate, because the town clerks will have the, the actual numbers of the vote and then pass that on to the Secretary of Education.
And then they're all going to be combined to pick.
No, no, at that point, you know.
But like for the Vernon, well, forget Vernon.
For the Guilford.
For the Guilford representative.
It'll have to be a Guilford representative.
But everybody can vote on it.
It's at-large voting.
So, so those, all those votes in those towns will be co-mingled.
Right.
Kind of like Massachusetts picking a representative for Vermont.
Well, that's a loss.
It makes, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, and, and on our September 8th meeting, we had a pretty lengthy discussion, I think, related to the, the co-mingling versus non-co-mingling and at-large voting versus not-at-large voting and what that would mean. And, you know, the Act 46 Study Committee really wanted to let the, in this case, three smaller towns have the opportunity to have more of a voice, which is why we went with the at-large voting option. Because really, we had the at-large voting option or not. But if we deal with not, then it would be on proportionality, which would mean Brattleboro on this new unified board would have six board members.
But don't you, don't you suspect that the at-large members would probably be from Brattleboro?
Not, well, maybe, but maybe not. You know, if people, we'll use Guilford as an example, if, if a bunch of people from Guilford all run and not enough people from Brattleboro run, for instance, for the at-large positions plus the positions that have to be from that town, then in theory.
I can, I can, you know.
You know, in theory, it could be, there could be, you know, four members from, from Guilford. Or more, or whoever, whatever, you know.
Sean might even attract some votes from Brattleboro.
He might, yeah.
In one.
Right. So it's a, it's, it's, so it, but it was, you know, that was done as a, I mean, because the other way, it's a definite Brattleboro would have the advantage over everyone else. And that was a concern early on in the process with Act 46, was people were very fearful that Brattleboro would be able to steamroll anything they wanted through the other three towns. And I think we, those of us that are on this board, tried to explain to the people from the town boards that, you know, we, right now, Brattleboro has a majority on this board, but that's never been my experience here, that Brattleboro steamrolls something through over on somebody else. You know, and we tried to explain that, and there was still fear. Yeah, Sean?
It was, this, a different subject, but it was expressed at that meeting. I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but I did watch it on VCTV, thank you very much. And it was expressed by the Putney rep that if we have the, the vote for unification and the directors and, what was the other third one?
Vernon withdrawal?
No, Vernon withdrawal is going to be in January. So I guess in March, we're going to be two. That, that if it is defeated, that there wouldn't be enough time between then and June 30th to have another vote to see if people want to reconsider. So I don't know if that's an issue or not.
It, it just doesn't seem to make sense to try to have another vote before town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the only other thing is the next study committee meeting is Thursday, September 22nd at Putney Central at 6 o'clock.
When does state board approval of the articles fit into this?
Yeah, it sounds like they're going to put it off till December.
December, yeah.
And I, the, the conversation I had with somebody from the AOE, the representative for the Act 46 stuff, is I think the state board would want to see how the Vernon vote goes with all the districts before they, they have a meeting.
I mean, that's going to be pretty telling, because it could go, you know, it could make everything go one way or the other way.
Yeah, that's going to, that's going to be.
And those votes obvious will be co-mingled among the four towns, is that correct?
I believe the, the town clerks will send their, their numbers to the Secretary of Education.
So nobody's going to, from the individual towns, will see the actual tally.
Are we talking about the initial vote?
No, the Jan, with Vernon is.
Yeah, they'll, they'll.
Actually, no, Vernon can't be co-mingled. If any one town exits it, then so Vernon can't be co-mingled. Just like the first votes for, for merger cannot be co-mingled.
And then if that is, the Vernon, if, if the town, if one town says, no, Vernon can't leave the union district, number six, then what, then everything's off the table?
No.
No.
Vernon knows, so the study committee would consider an option of making Vernon necessary or advisable.
Oh, for the March vote.
For the merger.
Does Vernon get a vote in that?
They would.
In the district-wide withdrawal vote?
No.
Okay.
Because they, because you've already, you've already.
Stranger things have happened.
Yeah, that's true. You've already had that.
And the Vernon would know that.
Yeah. That's it is not to fix it.
Right. All right, and everybody good with Act 46 so far? Okay, so is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or pinched? Okay, seen that. All right, well, yeah, so let's move on to administrative reports. Why don't we start at the far end and work our way this way? All right, everyone, BAM's your.
Well, I just wanted to report that school's begun very smoothly and it's been pretty warm in the classrooms and during in-service and with the classes the last few weeks. It's been warm for everybody, but particularly in the upstairs classrooms, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the High School Career Center, it's well into the eighties many days. And I've been pretty impressed with how well the students in particular have kind of handled it and been pretty resilient with it and as well as the staff. So, you know, I think early in the school year, spirits are up so well that they don't seem to be as impacted with the heat. But they've worked really hard. And I'm happy to report, we, we budgeted for 303 students and we're up to 318. And I contribute a fair amount of that. There, there were, there always is a number of families who move in during the summer we don't anticipate. But we've also drawn some tuition students that we hadn't necessarily anticipated. We had some late Vernon registrations, maybe they're on the fence. We drew our first student that I'm aware of from Westminster West, tuition town. So, you know, we're doing good things to draw students here. And those tuition students almost always, they, they're almost always good character kids who really add to our school. They're just, you know, they're coming here because of our academic program and our programs that we offer outside of class. And they're families who are willing to travel to, to come here. So I'm really happy to report that. During our in-service work, we had about half the time teacher prep, but the other half was a lot of in-service work. And we have some major goals that we worked on during that time. We're beginning the process of moving to some proficiency-based practices. And one of them is implementing a HAO rubric, which Steve's probably talked about a little bit, which is habits of work. And starting to separate out, you know, grading practices, kind of work habits versus academic standards. And so we, we spent time looking at what that looks like. Those rubrics were developed at the Middle Grades Institute in the summer. And for the progress reports coming up, believe it or not, they're coming up fairly soon, the teachers will be reporting out on habits of work. And we're going to have the students self-reflect on their own habits of work. So that's a big shift. And we're taking a look at what it's going to look like on the actual report card. Report cards are going to be filled up with more numbers than they have in the past. But it's a good starting point for some of the proficiency-based work. We all have also been spending a lot of time with student-led conference planning and making that shift. Done some half-day work with teams, with the four teams. I gave them each a half a day in September and a half a day in October to work with our rep from the Tarrant Institute, Rachel Mark, working on planning and how they're going to implement student-led conferences. And so we're pretty excited about that. That's a shift for many people, but it's a shift that I'm excited about. And I think that people are going to find there's many more pros to it than potential cons. So I'm really excited about that work. We, we opened the school year with a tech night, kind of a combination tech night, open house night. And we made those early in the year because we wanted to educate parents and begin a partnership with, between home and school around Chromebooks and electronics. Those were really well attended, it was brutally hot in here. We made it through. Did a few adjustments for next year. One of my, one of the things was last year, I made both seventh and eighth grade families come, because it was the first year we were kind of doing it. I did the same this year, but a lot of repetition for the eighth grade parents who did it last year. And then they also do it as, as a freshman. So I'll probably make some adjustments for next year, but generally, we're really happy with the turnout. Aside, along with the tech presentations, the teachers showed off classrooms. They did kind of fun welcoming activities. Each team did it a little differently, but generally happy about it. I'm still collecting some feedback from the staff to make any adjustments for next year. Beams after school began today, so I'm excited about that.
Yes, Lori?
Just, just curious, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
If I have any more questions, I'll hold them to you.
Sure.
So I'm excited to hear that the turnout is very high. I just want an idea of a rough percentage. When you say turnout's high on these open houses, is it 50%?
I would say 70, 80% probably. I mean, place is pretty packed.
That's amazing.
Because we do it like, we did the eighth grade night, the night before the first day of school. There's a little bit of a draw, because they're required to come in order to sign off to get the Chromebooks sent home.
Good.
And then we videotaped it and we kind of have the parents come in. If they weren't able to make it, I have, I have them come in and I've set up a computer in a conference room and they have to watch a presentation. That's a challenge, some people don't want to sit and deal. But, you know, it's generally been successful, I think. Yeah.
That's good.
That was a really rough estimate, but it was pretty packed in here both nights. The parent team, I was a little, I should say disappointed, but I was anticipating we had, on those open house nights, we, we really promoted this, trying to start a parent team here. And tonight was the night where we had the first meeting at 6 o'clock. And Julianne Egan, who's doing, she's an English teacher, she's doing her administrative internship. So she's taken on the task of organizing that, promoting it and all that. And we sold it big time at those parent nights, handed out tons of flyers, and we got like seven or eight parents there tonight. You know, so I was hoping for a bigger turnout, but we'll, we'll, they seemed really energetic about being there and they, they felt like they, they would help spread the word and so, but I do want to recognize Julianne for really put together a great presentation, and she's really energetic about doing that. And the last thing I want to do is thank Mike for, I had some issues with staffing in certain classes this year, and we knew that, but then I had to make a bunch of last minute, we had to really get creative the last minute and coming up with some staffing needs. And Mike was able to secure some part-time Career Center teachers to come and, and work a little extra with some of my, I had a couple holes in some classes. And so it's a good partnership, because we get to expose the middle school students to what some of the program at the Career Center offers. And, and to some different kind of classes that they would never take normally. So we got some like border culture going on, and we got some dance and what else?
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement. And so those, really, really good partnership so far. And, but Mike really helped me figure out some real problem-solving rate of schools starting. So, so far it's worked out really well.
Excellent.
Yeah. Any, any other questions?
Let's move up one to the high school.
Sure. So we are back full steam, and we started with freshman first day. You know, we welcomed our freshmen a day before the rest of the students came. And the class of 2020 is pretty amazing. A lot of really great kids, energetic, a lot of thoughtful kids. And about 15 to 20 more than we thought were going to be here, and that was good to see too. So, you know, we spent a day getting to know them, departments did scavenger hunts around the school. They got to figure out how to use a locker, all of those things that, that we remember with fear from our own high school days. Another thing that happened that same week is, you know, we presented Chromebooks at an evening session to those parents of ninth graders. But we also managed to scrounge together enough Chromebooks that we're now a fully one-to-one school. So our seniors have access to Chromebooks as well. Not every senior has opted to take one, but we did send home documentation, letting them know that our teachers are using Google Classroom, they're expected to be able to access online resources here. And they've done that, which is nice to see. Along those lines, though, I'm always careful to say, and I'll say it here as well, that the best computer is not a replacement for a great teacher. And, you know, we still have the best teachers in the state right here in Brattleboro. Along those lines, we are hosting on May 10th through 13th, we're hosting the Allstate Music Festival. Steve Rice would like to invite curious board members to the opening planning meeting, which unfortunately is Thursday, September 22nd in the auditorium at 7 o'clock. They're going to be looking for a lot of families to host. They're going to be looking for help organizing parades, organizing concerts, doing ticketing. So if you want a small role. So, if you want a small role or a big role in the Vermont State Music Festival, we have that role for you. Patty Meyer has been doing a great job with the housing committee. But I'll circle back again and ask for your help along the way. It's a great event. We haven't had it since two thousand and one here. And the director of the, I don't know what his actual title is, but the director of the music festival came here and toured the building with Steve and I and looked around and was stunned by the changes since two thousand and one was pre-renovation. And so, they're very excited to be here as well.
They'll be back there every year.
Uh, no. No, four hundred of our closest friends. We can do once in a while, not every year though. But speaking of close friends, this Thursday, we are welcoming seventeen Swiss students from Geneva, Switzerland. Our first exchange of the year. They'll be here for the next two weeks. And they'll be working with students at BUHS, BAMS and Green Street as well. And a lot of that work has been done by Suzanne Grenoble, BUHS French teacher, and Al Sharks, who teaches French at Green Street Elementary School. I attended a meeting that they had planning last Thursday, and it looks like a great program for our Swiss friends. And then remember, we'll be going over in April to Paris and then on to Switzerland. So, they haven't invited me yet.
Do you need a jet boat?
I know, right? Love to go. I've never been there. Over the summer, I wanted to note that we had eleven BUHS students who were summer experimenters and international, experiment international living. And we had eleven of our students went abroad. And they went all over the world, literally. China, Costa Rica, France, Japan, Jordan, India, Morocco, Tanzania, South Africa and the Netherlands. And so, our students took great advantage of that opportunity. They studied everything from ethnic minorities in China to Arabic language in Jordan, to public health in India, to wildlife and ecology in Tanzania. So, our kids are doing amazing things in the world, and it's nice to see that they're out there. We had open house last Thursday. It was pretty well attended. I can tell you that the auditorium was about seventy-five percent full. I don't know an exact number of parents, but it was very well attended. In addition to getting to see all of their students' classes, I gave a short presentation on proficiency-based learning. Presented information about retake policies, presented information about separating out academic grades behavioral grades, and talked about the habits of work as well. Along those same lines, on October sixth, we'll be excusing high school students at twelve-thirty. And we'll be doing parent conferences from three to seven P.M. on October sixth. This year, we're gonna continue to do what we've done in the past where teachers or parents will go from classroom to classroom and wait for teachers. We did get a line on a fairly inexpensive software program that may allow us to schedule conferences online. So, parents will be able to go on, log in, choose their, their schedules for ten-minute conferences along the way. We're still kind of working through some questions like, you know, what happens if I see my biology teacher at three-thirty, but I can't see my English teacher until six-thirty? You know, those are things that we're kind of trying to work out the logistics of. Either that or we're gonna set the lounge with big screen TVs.
They can wait in your office.
What, what times again?
Uh, three to seven. So, on the sixth. This is homecoming week, another thing that happens pretty quickly. And all kinds of events going on this week. Today was flannel day, which given the temperature today, it was a tough one. Yeah, I pulled out a flannel shirt today and said, nope, I couldn't do it. Tomorrow's twin day, so if you see me, don't judge. We have tie-dye day, white t-shirt and jean day, and of course, purple and white day. We'll be doing a pep rally Friday. That will certainly be quiet. I think you have something going on. Special Ed has a full district meeting in the room next to the gym, so that'll be good. I've already invited him to join us.
And do they know to wear purple?
They, I hope so. Friday night, a little change. We're gonna feature soccer games on the fields. And then our homecoming football game will be Saturday afternoon. Very excited to see a, a day football game. It's been a long time since we have been during the day, so that'll be a lot of fun.
And. Who are we playing?
We are playing.
South Burlington.
South Burlington. So, you know, we'll be looking to, we're one and two right now. We're looking to go two and two. Football had a big win over the weekend, as did girl soccer, big win over Springfield. So, you know, if you get a chance, come watch some current sports this week. Lot of fun. And students love it when adults come and cheer them on. Last and not least, I am excited to present that we have hired Jason Copeland as our varsity boys basketball coach. Jason's been an assistant coach here for many years. And after interviewing him, the committee felt that he was the person to move up and pick the reins for the varsity program. As you know, Joe Rivers has stepped down. And also for JVs, we welcome Winston Salesman. He is, has been with BAMS for.
Two years? As long as I've been here.
Right. And, you know, Winston also brings a lot of basketball experience. And so, we're excited about the, that team. We're excited about the hoop season. So, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. All right. Career Centers.
So, this Thursday, our forestry construction and applied learning students will be attending New Hampshire Construction Days, which is located in New Boston, New Hampshire. About fifty schools and sixteen hundred students are registered to attend this event. There will be hands-eye career exploring event, and seventy exhibitors will be there to share their experiences in the construction and transportation-related fields. The event focuses on increasing awareness for careers in heavy equipment construction, electrical and so forth, and all the construction trades. So, it should be a great opportunity for the kids to experience. Maybe it'll get a job opportunity as well, some of the seniors. Our future Business Leaders of America students will be attending the Big E on Thursday. So, there won't be many students in the Career Center this Thursday. It'll be very quiet. And they all have stu, they all have assignments related to their specific area of concentration. And they'll be tasked to interview different businesses and vendors from all across the states that are represented there. And then they, of course, they have a little bit of fun as well, but they have to do their work at first in the morning, which is always a fun day for the students. On October fifth, our filmmaking students will be featured in West Dover at the Independent Television and Film Festival, which is pretty interesting. Instructor Josh Moise helped those students create their short projects. Some of the students involved with this project will be Adam Hinckley and Ben Kaufman, who are showing Dance Families, which is described as a dark comedy that parodies reality television as two young dangers prepare for the performance of a lifetime.
Another.
West Dover. The Big Four O, written and directed by Owen Comstock and Emily Cuts and Sam Turner, is about a single man getting ready for his fortieth birthday party. His only friend is a photograph of a woman in a frame. So, it'd be interesting.
And other students that you named?
Pardon?
This people that produced, you said are students, right?
Yes, yep. Collette Anton and Justin Savanna, Wake, sees a young couple experience love and loss. And the Twinkie asterfry, ap- asterfry by Freeja Cappy, Goldfarb and Camille Gunsberg will make the audience laugh as two high school students believe a class assignment might be the blame for catastrophe. So, if you have a chance, check it out. It's the fifth through the eighth in Dover. And I have a recommendation for a new para-professional in culinary. Her name is Elena Newsmith, and she is alumni of BUHS. About ten, eleven years ago, she graduated. So, I'd like to recommend that to the board tonight. Elena, is that it? That's it?
We usually don't do para stuff, so it's more of a letting us know.
Okay.
So, thank you for letting us know. And nice to have an alum come back.
Yes, he's super excited.
What's going on here?
That's great.
Do you know, Mike, if there's a schedule of what days or times the student films are shown during the festival?
I'm going to be getting that soon from the instructor.
And it, would it be on the WRCC website?
It could be, yeah.
Or I could contact you if I'm interested in it.
You could email me.
I've seen it on Facebook. I wasn't, I saw all the student names. I think, what, what is this? And then it wasn't really clear what the event was, but I think if I look a little further, I'll, I'll find it. What, what's the name of the event?
It is the Independent Television Film Festival.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, Central Office.
Yeah, I just have one brief announcement. With the beginning of the school year, we started the Vermont Food Bank School Food Pantry Program last year. It's on the first and third Mondays of each month, ten o'clock to eleven. They do change it with holidays, so this past Labor Day, they didn't run it. So, this being the third Monday of the month was the first time since school has been in session. The principles have been great because the truck, a big truck rolls right by the Career Center parking area. And cars will pull up, get out and go through the really great food options. A lot of fresh produce, vegetables, yogurts and things like that. What's really great is it's open to all families with children in the district. So, grandparents, parents, you know, there's no identification. There's nothing that you need to bring other than a vehicle that you're gonna load up with some really great produce. So, we're really appreciative of the Vermont Hunger and Vermont Food Bank. And we're, we're really glad that we're able to host this on the first and third Monday, ten to eleven o'clock. Last year, as the information came out, we, we had about thirty people, families coming in, vehicles. And today was pretty low, but we're hoping to spread the word, and this might help as well. We'll have flyers through all the schools newsletters and get the information out. So, if you know of anybody that wants to come by, send them over.
So, first and third Mondays, ten to eleven?
Ten to eleven. Right out by the Career Center.
And generally, if that is a holiday, then it's not scheduled and it's not rescheduled?
We, I, I noticed the flyer last year that they scheduled it on a Thursday of a, of a time when it was a holiday. So, I don't know if that's always the case, but what we will do is, when we get that information, we'll send it out in the newsletter.
Okay, great.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to unfinished business, we have some policies for second read.
We have some, we do have some policies for second read. As I said, we have not had a lot of time put into these yet. Happy to hear any notes they would like to make, but we will be putting these for further reading next session after we take an hour.
So, if there's any board members who are not on policy, planning and policy, who have suggestions on those re, on those, they can just send them to you?
Yes.
So, did we get the, were those sent to us, the revisions?
Yes, and you have already sent me your notes on them.
Oh, those ones I sent, okay. That was a long one. So, but we haven't, we haven't gotten the revisions from that yet.
No, no, that's what we get.
We have next time. Okay, great. All right, is there any other unfinished business? Any new business coming for us tonight? Seeing none?
I just, evidently Baldwin likes to sit together.
I've noticed that. There's a lot of reflection off.
So, what are you gonna do? Keep Keith out?
I don't know. Keith is gonna shave his head or.
Well, maybe there's an invitation to join.
Could be a fundraiser.
You don't wanna go.
All right.
I have a quick question.
Yeah?
I'm sorry if I missed this in one of the meetings, or I swear I saw a headline in the Reformer. What's the status of lunch prices? Is it the same for all of the schools this body represents? Anybody off the top of their head able to give me an update on where we are with lunch prices and policies? Free reduced?
Are they driven by the federal school lunch program? We have to, we can't make, it's like something about profit and everything, right?
We can't.
Like you can't, you can't prop, the school can't. Yeah, I don't know that.
So, there's a set price?
There's kind of like.
Yeah, there's guidelines that they have to follow.
There's a set price for full price, and that price is the same if each of the three schools provide better work? And then there's a price for reduced, or is, if you're eligible for reduced?
There's a price for redu, so if you're eligible for reduced, you get reduced if you're eligible for free.
The price is free.
The price is free, right. And that's for breakfast and for, for lunch.
Okay, so all three schools provide breakfast and lunch? And some students pay full price, some students pay reduced, and some students are free?
Correct.
Okay, yep, yep.
And we have like, the cafeteria is open first thing in the morning. Some students eat then, but not very many. What we find is our snack break at, for the middle school at ten, and the carts come around to the, I know with the Career Center, they come around to high school?
At ten.
The folks in the cafe bring carts around, and there's like a break in our schedule. And the kids line up, and that's when most of the breakfast is really sold, and then lunch. The free and reduced program, they're only allowed one breakfast. And there's kind of two opportunities for it, so they're only allowed one based on the program.
Their student lunch is two dollars and seventy cents this year.
And then there's, we have the app, we have the after-school snacks, which are starting up, which are available to all students free as part of the national, is that National School Lunch Program that does that?
I don't know. It's a Vermont.
It's a Vermont.
Vermont.
It's a Vermont program.
Yeah, so.
So, if you participate in an after-school program of any type, you could get a free snack regardless of your eligibility?
Right. So, some of our coaches in the spring actually use that for away games. And they, you know, or practice. Students actually get a snack before practice.
Nice.
And the people who distribute it have to have a certain training and everything, and they have to document everything. And they're getting tighter with it, but.
Well, and part of the reason why it's across the board, I think, is also too because once you hit a certain threshold of percentages of families within the district that qualify for free and reduced lunch, then you don't have to check everybody's eligibility. Isn't that true for after-school?
Not for the after-school. The after-school's different.
Okay.
And that, that's free for everybody, but you're talking about the school lunch, the free and reduced for the breakfast and lunch. And we're not, some of the elementary schools qualify for everybody to have it, but not.
That's what I saw then. So, I think currently in Brattleboro, all of the elementary school students get a free lunch because enough students qualify for free and reduced.
It's a universal meals program, which includes breakfast and after-school lunch. And they also do the after-school program, which is a separate program.
Okay, well, thank you for the update. I just wanted to make sure that I was aware of what was going on with our lunch program. If anyone asks me now, I'll know.
If our report, our reported percentage of high schools is not high enough for universal, but if it was, we would definitely. So, we, you know, we're always trying to do outreach to parents who qualify, you know, because there's a lot of parents who, families qualified, they don't, they don't access the free and reduced lunch, which is too bad, because it's a great program.
It's too bad that they don't just put their app in, even if they don't, whatever, and choose to.
Right, and everybody gets one mail home at least once a year. All right, anything else for tonight?
Mr. Chair, and if there's no other business to come before the board, I move adjourned.
Is there a second? All right, I'll on favor. We are adjourned.